Okay, I'm. Time to start. Thank you all for coming. I wear my hat today just in case.
That's pretty funny.
It's got its name on it.
I'm gonna be. You've had a break. Yeah.
Okay, first of all. Ladies here. Most, yeah, would you introduce our guest?
Sure, uh, we have a Don Stallions who is head of General Service.
For the county.
For the county.
Okay, um. I hope everyone has read the minutes of the last meeting. And do I have any comments on it, any corrections or changes? Do they have a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I'm gonna change the. The direction or the listings on how we're gonna approach the meeting today. First of all, I wanna wanna go down to new business. And address the proposed amendment to the bylaws. In our library for the action plan. And if you all go to the. Can you pack it? There was, there is a new proposal for a committee or amendment change. I hope everyone has looked at that. And. Is there some discussion on? Proposed change?
Yeah.
So, um, do we need to make a motion?
Uh, let's talk about it first and then we'll make. It's gonna be there. Well, you, I guess we could make a motion and then.
Or second.
Alright. Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Change the amendment? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, alright, discussion.
And I guess I started, um, so I think it was like two months ago that the nominating committee. Talked about the, um, um, the officers and looking at the bylaws, um, there was just a little bit. I can say that word here, so you know what I mean. Um, but anyway, so, um, it states that, um, from the way I've read that, um. That it was, uh. You know, it's, there was, uh, the officers shall be eligible. It says the terms in the same office, but it doesn't state the the terms. So that's something that, you know, I think just for the purpose of, you know, being transparent. We probably should reconsider, um, you know, changing that. Um, I think the the nominating committee, um, like. The the positions have been in place for years already. So that would be, you know, potentially a third, um, so I just kinda like, it's one of those things that I felt like it was. And we needed to get to that and just clarify and. I think the verbiage, I think that might have been Stephanie and like just collaborative effort. Um, the recommended, what I would, you know, recommend was the, um. What you see here, the, um, unless, you know, added at the end of the, no member shall be eligible serving more than. Unless passed by three quarters of the whole board members. So that would give the flexibility that if it's voted every June. And I think, you know, from conversations, I wanna add the, uh. You know, the elected, uh. No member shall be eligible serving more than two successive one-year terms in the same office. And then unless passed by two quarters of the whole board. So, um, with that said, it would basically just clarify that it's, you know, the terms are one year. And you can serve in two years, two years consecutively. And then unless it's asked by, you know, unless it's brought up in special circumstances like we have COVID, like we have. Crazy things that kick changes like your director that it might be a good thing to consider if the nominating. So that's kinda, I just wanted to bring that up because I think I was instigator on that one potentially. Um, but it just a means of, you know, being transparent and having a black.
You wanna change the the wording or do you wanna go with what you have said?
I think the, um, the only change from what we have with black and white would be the. No more than two successive one-year.
It didn't, it didn't state how long the term is.
Right, it doesn't have. How long a term is. But it doesn't the diff. Of term and the terms, uh, as three years. If you wanna look at it from that.
Trustee.
That's true.
That's standard.
I think if it's, um. In section two point seven. Because you have like it's recommended, it's like the June meeting, that it's implied that officer terms are an annual.
Well, we all, we all assumed that it wasn't, so. I agree, I agree.
It's alright.
So, so.
Clarity is good.
We can confer. Kind of actually specify one year.
There goes.
That seventy-five percent of the board agreed to extend that one more year to the third year. Then it would need to be, that would not obviously pass.
Now, is it, would that be one, one additional year or is that, or is that each year?
That would be per year, so like this year, if you serve two years and then I mean, it says. For, you know, Emma her for one more year, that's gonna, I mean, it. Would present, you know, like.
That's basically three quarters, seventy-seven.
And that would be seventy, uh, the, uh, seventy-five to three quarters. That's the same as changing a new bylaws, so just to simplify things and not to add any more. Prejudice.
Can you refer?
I, I do have a question for Liz to be. Your understanding, our bylaws do state that, let me find them. The end of our bylaws state that. May be amended at any regular or special meeting. Provided the amendment was. So this change of defining how many years is a term, so the one-year term. Do I have to wait, put that in next notice and then vote on it at that meeting? Is that what you would interpret? I wanna make sure I'm.
I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, okay, that's fair.
I think we can adjust it. And vote.
Well, I, I mean, I don't. I don't know of any other boards in our region that practice that. But if you want. For clarification. I'll work with the council.
Got it, okay.
Okay, can you refer that?
Be.
Are you gonna copy?
The, the motion?
Yes.
Yes, that he's used made a motion to accept the proposed change or the resolution for amendment to the bylaws. You want me to state the full change in that motion? Okay. One of them, that's already in front of me, but I can pull it up.
You can, you can state it in the minutes.
Yeah.
Adding, um, one year.
Two successive, two successive one-year terms. Yep.
Okay, do we have, do we have a vote on that? More, more, another, okay, more discussion.
So, uh, so the, so the objective today is, um, to. To vote on the officers from, from the, uh. The board. And one of the. The position, vice president's position is to be ready for the presence. Whoever is elected vice president traditionally, it's been groomed for the next person.
It doesn't say that.
No, no, this, this is, this is us. You know, when, when we, when we select a president and a vice president, the objective is for that vice president to be. Kind of ready to take the. Traditionally.
Ideally.
Ideally, not necessarily, uh, concrete, but that's, that's the objective. Uh, and because of the confusion that we had regarding this particular nomination. Uh, the person who is in the vice president's role agrees to move into the next position. Selected an elect next year of each year. That's why we're actually extending the one-year, uh. Positional, position to, to you and the, uh, as the presidential candidate. So we're all clear of how this particular situation is coming about. Because traditionally we wanna follow. Uh, two, two consecutive one-year terms. Unless, again, voted by two quarters of the, by, uh, four persons. We just wanna be clear in terms of what we're, we're saying going forward. Okay, based on comments from the nominee.
And I think that goes in the, the, the whole business, right? You're gonna, it's gonna be part of the. So it might become like the. Coming up next. As well, yes. I, I think, you know, personally, even if it was not the nominating, like I think that change would just clarify. Even if that was not the situation.
Yep.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Okay, you wanna vote on the. All in favor of voting?
Aye.
In your pocket. Here's. Alright, we'll be moving back to our agenda then. Far as my report is concerned. Manny and I got a, had an opportunity to meet with Parks and Rec, um, this week. And talked to Joe Huff about, about some things that. We'd like to see changed or be improved at this library with the, the. Hall of Fame. That is, um, library grounds, but nothing as much is happening with it. And we would like to see it improved, so I had a meeting first with, uh. A professor at UT, Lorna Keithley, who is a computer, uh. Programming professor and. She also works as. To upgrade. The. Programs that, that are not there, but to create a program where people can actually walk in, push some buttons and. And, and see Stephanie, uh, playing basketball or finding out who she is as a Hall of Fame member. Or, or anybody else who's on the Hall of Fame. And just bring it into the twenty-first century, we'll actually have interaction with so young. And Parks and Rec was thrilled with that and we're gonna pursue that. Then Lorna came in and talked to, to Hannah and. And Manny and talked to her, talked to them about what, what she does and how she would go about doing it. And so right now, we're gonna go move forward with that and. We're not looking for showcases or, uh, any, anywhere else, anything else that we can exhibit. Things in, and we'll need a couple TV sets to, or monitors, just to be able to monitor.
Partnership has something really neat. I was there last week. When you go in on the left, they have a touchscreen.
And that kind of works.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe we can talk about that. I think we. I think. And, and, and you can connect with Jeff and talk about. Works. Our experience on it.
But Lorna is donating her time to do this, so.
Great.
Let's see, we go forward, so that, I was.
Can I say something? I served on that committee for. The Hall of Fame committee selection. And there are several years of pictures and videos and all of that already captured.
Right.
Um, if they can locate where they are. It's a lot of that stuff.
He said they have.
Yeah.
It's never been put on anything other than this. Excuse me, or BHS or whatever. And then, then there's archives in the newspaper and we'll go back and try to research that. Upgrade that a little bit. So that's, that's pretty much my report. Any, any questions?
Have you, including River College, is that at all?
No. This is your good book, um. Which includes Merivale and Cole. And Lewis. And then I, I don't believe you.
What are you saying? I'm sorry. I don't think, uh, I don't think the Blount County Hall of Fame, I mean, there's probably people who went to Merivale College, but I don't think it's related. Because it's just Blount County, like high schools.
Because we're asking from like a resource standpoint, if they have pictures or if we need, I like partnering with UT, but. Merivale can help too. Anyway.
We certainly do have a lot of photos and. College and content person there is anyone else?
Yeah, I figured we, I figured.
And you, you vote to library, that college, I mean, you and there's a tab for archives. But she hasn't.
Thank you.
Okay. Manny?
Did you skip Don on purpose?
I'm sorry. No.
He's saying like, he might wanna go over something.
Yeah.
I, I want to invite Don to, to the trustee. Starting July first is gonna be a if when it comes to possibility with maintenance, so. Don, and what is your official title?
I'm Director of, you know, so. Custodian, maintenance, risk management and records, all your departments that I oversee. So, uh, we already deal with y'all from risk management, pay through our programs, we'll cover it on that. Uh, and I think the, the transition, we, we've already done this with the health departments several years ago. Uh, that worked out, worked out really well. Uh, you know, the idea is kinda on these folks. You know, they, they know how to run a library, but it's worried about. It's the same thing we do at the health department. Don't worry about health department, you do people well, we worry about roofs and ground. Taking care of all that, so, yeah, we're all, we're already working, working with you all, um, uh.
I wanna thank you for your response to the leak and to the ceiling tile come down. If you all have been here. Last week and a half. Floor was wet, ceiling tile was falling down and it's still falling down and certainly not, not ceiling tile, but. But she brought it, it's dropped and needs to be replaced and that's cruised around already and it wasn't on hot.
Is our AC unit okay? Is this just a malfunction? Oh.
So we.
Does that need replacing?
It doesn't need replacing, um, whatever reason, getting fresh air intake, what we think happened. Uh, that, you have two air handlers up there and one of their handlers, it, it was open at a hundred percent. It's allowed the hot air to come in over a coal bowl, which calls excessive condensation. The drip pan can handle it, float it to the floor and then down to the ceiling, so that's how it made its way into the library. Uh, we have closed those manually now. We have a, a certified train, HVAC. On our staff, uh, and then for things that, that may be over his head, we also, we also reach out premieres. Company that we use to give us assistance, so they're kinda trying to figure out what's going on, trying to. We had, you know, it was two, two separate things, two, it happened twice. We came in and. Closed it manually, closed it, thought everything was great and then this is after the commission workshop on Janus. Felt there again and the system had, had opened it up again, so that's why we disconnected both. Uh, intakes from the system. So it, it's okay when it's doing, it was one little small thing, but. About why is the system wanting?
That's a rotator.
And should not be that, it's probably a software issue. Uh, or sensor issue somewhere, something's telling it, because the other hand, the five percent that work should have been. For whatever reason, this one, the system thought it should be a hundred.
And it, did it send that email, there had been no annual maintenance to on the units and that could have been prevented?
Yeah, and that's what the benefit of having Don's team now. Like here, because they do this all the time versus.
I can see.
Librarians.
That's our, our main, our main worry. Especially the beginning of summer, the beginning of winter, when everything kicks off, that's what's gonna happen.
Thank you.
But Don, plus, plus the advantages and disadvantages that have you moving to our area and.
So your benefits are just that, we bring a different skill set, oh, you've been having this problem for a while. There were trash cans, what, what fell through the ceiling with. So you had trash cans that were full of water, it had not been empty. Probably, yeah, probably been up there months, if not over years, so there's no telling how long this problem has been going on. Uh, when we got up there, your roof fence. The fog, there was standing on the roof, uh, called Little Garden, it was, were, were over the years. Yeah, in front of the, uh, air handle room, there was dirt piled up and handled nice trees and stuff growing in it on, on the. But we bring a skill set, we bring a knowledge on how to best use that. Um, you know, the downside, to be honest, we don't have dedicated team. But I think what you're getting is, is a larger team that may not be dedicated to your building, brings a lot of different skill sets where. We won't just put buckets, now I'm not saying there's not gonna come a time we got to put a bucket up.
So remind me, our folks, our maintenance folks, are they staying on staff or just using Don?
So they're gonna be part of Don's staff.
So they won't do things like put buckets or what?
Yeah, they'll be strictly doing maintenance. Here they were kinda going above and beyond when it came to. Projects here, whereas, and I came from a system where we had this and it does work, is you do have someone that specializes in plumber. Or electrician or H fat instead of.
And, and it gives you one rope to choke. You know, it's not who gets down, who comes in, it. Why, why does this need taking care? And so, you know, Manny's got one phone call, he doesn't have to go through a list of.
So the landscaping, Don Stallion.
I'll worry you that you're getting emails.
That's what costs money, but we're. We're already getting votes too. That's my hat out there.
Yeah, it's pretty. It's.
Yeah, I mean, you can't tell where some of them, you know, it, it's gonna have to be, most of it's gonna have to. But we're actually getting votes on that to. To freshen that up, but, so your two maintenance people fall into our rotation, so what we do is. Is a Denny Gardner is our facility supervisor. And so he's one that, that does the day-to-day with the staff and the staff will meet up at the county garage if they're behind. Justice Center and, and that's where they'll plan their day and then they go out and it is, they, they have. You know, they have some things they know they might get done and there's emergencies come out too, they kinda dispatch to the different. Your custodial staff, uh, we're still working on that. Chaz, Chad Wassman coming in and working to build and flow the building, having that to the best. Like, we're, we're hoping to have a day quarter, which is something that we need badly throughout the county. Uh, because right now our custodial staff is, is a second shift, um, and so to have a day quarter. That'll be able to hit some high-traffic bathrooms, some high-traffic areas and then. The occasional spills of accidents that we have.
What about on weekends?
Uh, we'll be able to provide for you when. Available now, for maintenance, we're on call, so we, there's always somebody that's on call. Uh, and, and those guys take the trucks home with all the tools and everything, all live local, so. If, if you have any issues.
Working on elevators?
The what?
You're working on elevators?
Elevators. Good, but we're all out. So, um, now, uh, Otis has our contract. For the county, um, ConAid just put in the, the elevator, we just, we just built that brand new big dollar elevator. Um, and so I can tell you from working with, with elevator companies, they're not really always that. On the spot with things, like they, they know there's only two or three and they really don't care, so, but, but we've, we've, we've got. Pretty good contacts involved in children.
Don, do you guys plan on, or you may have fucked the building and. Major threats and it kinda created a list for us.
So actually we had, this is something, this, I mean, we had VFA, which is a, a company, and they actually brought in engineers. And they top the bottom of our county buildings. Well, uh, they're, they're gonna take that and, and all the deficiencies that are, but they're looking wrong. It will go into computer programs, we'll have facilities management software, so all this data will go into there, we'll be able to generate reports on. Here's what we need, here's what it'll cost, so they, they give you facility index, SCI score, which tells you how good a condition the truck is in. Zero being brand new and then one being it's gonna fall down, what it is, it's, you take the cost to repair it and, and. Divided by the, the, what the building's worth, so also when you get to one, it's gonna cost you more to repair it than what it's worth. And so we can go to commission and say, uh, you know, we need X amount of dollars to keep the library. Yes, and if you don't fund that, then in five years it's gonna cost this. Uh, and so there's another point, we're the ones that are going through commission and saying, you know, they need a new roof, they need new carpet over here, they need this floor. That's gonna be county maintenance going with the software as a tool, they improve, it's just not done in Denny's thing, hey, this carpet look nice, no. This stuff needs to be replaced.
Like, have they already done that here in the library?
They've already been here, so we, we've got, the, the schools, the schools were the big ones. As, as square footage as they had, so they are, they are getting ramped up. And purposely, we're kinda behind in those, those, of the planning the school needs to go through. So we have the raw data right now, but we're just kinda going through to make sure. Once we okay that, don't input it in.
And I can say this also, that, that they have a list of priorities. Uh, Brian Baldwin does, has a list of, these are the things that need to happen first and. It, everything gets added to that in the prioritization and some things can drop down, some things need to be up and. And he shared that with me when I, that was.
And, and that list will change with the software, so Brian's, Brian's involved, y'all as a board, you can. It needs to, the software, while it can't be manipulated to, you know, too much, we can't, we can't say, okay, what's. I know we're on board is life safety and it will prioritize it. On board is whatever, so there are some ways that we can customize it, but it kinda is what it is. Now, there's a lot of stuff, when you come out and schools just went through this, there's, there's a shopping price tag. Well, the problem is, they'll say this carpet, this five-year lifespan. And so the software's gonna say in five years you gotta replace this carpet. Carpet's still in good shape, doesn't need to be replaced, maybe we got a HVAC unit that doesn't need to be replaced. Just because its lifespan is, is full of, been exceeded, so there's, there's a little play there as well. Some of the panels and some electronics where it doesn't need to be replaced, lifespan of those panels is, is bad.
As far as the, the finance. So there's the, because it's a contract, right, that we're doing, um, with you guys, um, if there is anything that needs to be. That's still gonna be funding, that you're gonna have to request, right, like. The library still requests the funds for like maintenance, that we're just, I, do I understand that?
And, and so, um, we don't, we, we've taken over, there's an understanding. We didn't sign an MOU with the health department in the state, so, and last time we kinda went down the throat, the MOU. Kinda got, got in the way a little bit, uh. How it works and how it's working with the health department, we got, like, both of them, but something small, something. No, we, we take care of that. If you need a new air handler, you know, we're going. We're, we're going to commission and we're going to find a funding source, but now we're partnered with, now we're, we're going, we're going in there and saying. They need this, you know, sitting down with county finance and, and, and with you all saying, how, how do we fund this, this? And that, like I said, that software, you will see exactly. You'll be able now to put a five-year plan in place, what we're gonna need.
I think that's awesome, justification, everybody's the same, but just.
It will, and, and let me say too, on, on, I know you have some existing projects and we're gonna meet with Chris Soro, uh. Tomorrow, um, you know, those projects. Tomorrow, um you know, those projects pipeline, especially ones that have funding behind them, I don't see. I don't see they're slowing down on those, uh and the other benefit you have is the project manager. So uh you know, like we deal with the elevator, like we do with. Denny Gardner, like I said, our 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 maintenance supervisor has a lot of experience in that, so. Eddie Kerr, our purchasing agent, the three of us, we'll project manage. The elevator took way longer than we thought it would. And then the the company went bankrupt, it was stalling it, COVID hit. But we still came in under budget, so while it took a lot longer, we still brought it in under budget. It's good craftsmanship on it, so all those worries are out, so. And y'all get to come to how come we've started on.
I thought we in Chris Soro's contract, did it project management.
Yeah, okay. We're meeting with Chris tomorrow.
Yeah, may wanna.
So we we had an architectural project. One of the issues that we ran into, and I'll say this. By the mirror of and to have somebody that is a county representative. Called the drawings. Which caused uh some the, which one the big slowdowns was, which caused some of the doors and some of the things to be built wrong. And of course now we're in the middle of COVID and nobody's shipping, nobody's building. And so there was there was a lot of this and there was a lot of starting shutdown for the contract. The contractor's attorney got involved and the architect's attorney got involved. And and it's a good thing we're there, so so there there could be a time when you need your representative. Somebody that's not representing that another company that represented, operated representing. So I would still continue that, with with they can still continue that position, but. You, if you were gonna take on something big, if it would fall to Manny, it would fall to some.
What would you say are the greatest?
Greatest thing, I'm not saying. Again, I would definitely say you're rooted just from the number of leagues. Uh but my understanding is there's some structural problems as well, so it's for me to see exactly what Chris has to say. Tomorrow, but I understand that, I mean, you know, the window in Manny's office. Which is not uncommon in some of the buildings that that were built at this time in the county, it's a beautiful building, but it was built. Which is great when you build it, but.
I guess my only concern is bathroom maintenance. You know.
Yeah, that's.
The weekends.
The importance of having a day porter, so if there's a an accident. To feed the family restroom or something.
So I think eight bathrooms.
And they're, are they paper towels? You know, like, do we need to look at, maybe get an air dryer, is that eliminated?
Um the paper towel holders we use don't have problems, so we. We changed them out on our side. We have thirty something bathrooms over at the courthouse, we have about that many over at the justice center and no day porter.
Oh, really?
So, you know, from looking at it from a pure need. Um gosh, with y'all probably overstaffed, um or probably a little understaffed. We need, we do need a day porter, that bathroom, been over to the courthouse, the bathroom. My county clerks and trustees, it it needs a little help during the day, it needs a little help during the day, especially on busy days. Saying that, so that's where day porter would kind of help everybody else around, everybody else out, but. Um and again, and just to be honest, the day porter, if there's if there's something. You know. I'm not calling it a day porter, just to. It's a little something up, yeah, at courthouse, I'll go do it someday. I'll say, hey, coat machine's leaking, kind of, you know, go grab a mop real quick. Yeah.
I have a problem on Saturdays. Right now, we're not gonna be open on Sundays for a while. But Saturday still is the day that you guys don't work really work, I'm saying, is that right?
Well, yeah, but what probably what we're gonna do to get Chad's working to kind of learn the flows. But probably we'll have somebody else.
And what about nights?
Uh nights, um. Probably we will not be able to provide twenty four hour.
We're open till eight or nine.
Right, so except for Saturdays. After that time. Cause they 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 work from, they come in stagger shifts, somebody will be there about three thirty. We know they're they get their two main buildings, the justice center and the courthouse, they also do. Uh operations center, from part of it. Observation and coverage, so they are in this area. And we can provide contact numbers. Chad and everything, so the 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 cleaning, the deep cleaning. What he's thinking about, he's worked a couple days and and you know, they they're all, we call them specials, so. We'll hit the general mopping, emptying the trash, checking the toilet paper and all that sort of stuff. And then they'll they'll have specials where he'll do four from the stairwells or he'll do eyes or he'll do windows. And so just working those specials.
Can you schedule that or does the library schedule that?
We schedule that. All he has to worry about is the library, it's dirty. It's unacceptable, and we we warp around it, so what can we do to make it acceptable? I just want to say, there there's no more work. Library is clean or it's not, it's not come to us.
That you buy supplies that you do. Of the budget then?
Uh so the budget, the the budget for for maintenance and custodial. Was transferred into our budgets, what what their average bill was transferred to us. So there's no more in their budget, we we pay for it all, okay, so the only one I'm gonna pay for, I don't have a budget. And and I'm afraid what the bill's gonna be on the bill.
So do we have an M O U or we decided not to do one?
Um we can. I don't know why we would need to do one.
We ran into that with funding, so I just wanna be, I you know. Should we be proactive about having an M O U when it said go down the road, it's, oh, we're not contributing. Not that I don't trust.
Right.
You guys.
That's that's fine, we can do. We can do an M O U, the the funding, the only thing with funding like.
Yeah.
Except for. We just don't have, I don't have. My fun that I have to buy big ticket items. Uh is is limited by law, two buildings that have four rooms.
So the M O U could be like the cleaning, the pre-mat.
Something that'll break down, you gotta give us enough. I don't wanna get into at this time of year. I I want it to be more of. If the building's clean or it's not.
Yeah.
The the building maintained or it's not, not. And and actually, we don't have one in the department in years that's that's worked. Worked pretty well, but I don't blame you if you don't have have one as well, I just don't wanna get too detailed. This will broke it down.
I think, I mean, we can talk about it, but even if you guys drafted and both let both councils. County attorney look at it, I just know we've gotten into stuff with M O U, their funding, and I'm just. A little cautious now because of that.
Will you come to the, we had a meeting beforehand on at half of the year. Where perhaps the theater is falling apart. Will you come to those meetings or or have representative? Not as the county will automatically take over the.
That would be a big ticket item.
No, actually, we may not have the funds. You all. Manny would say, here's what we want. So here's what it's gonna take, if you say, yeah, we're going for it, we'll find the contract and we'll get it done.
We'd like to know that.
Yeah, and and so then we will, let me get a handle on the bill. Cause I'm I'm afraid of almost exactly what's. Like there's policies and structural problems.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay. Mention that.
You're welcome.
Okay, any future report?
So are we interested in doing an M O? This is what I'm scared of, okay, so we, our M O U is hazy with funding and it got down to what's in the M O.
Could you help me out?
It's a memory and a of understanding, so it's a no, it's kind of like an, it's an agreement. The parties and expectations of that, it is, it is like a lesser version of a contract. And so it could say, you know, we have an agreement that government is. Maintenance efforts and that includes grounds, bathrooms, that, you can keep them extremely general. He's probably, you know, and I've I've gotten into it with council before where they become too specific. The more general the better, but it's kind of like a protection, you like reported in your minutes and everything and you both. Say, if anyone says, no, we don't wanna do that anymore, right now, we don't have anything. We don't have a contract with them or anything, yeah, and it's not like it can, it doesn't legally bind them. It's not legally binding, but it's just kind of like a gentleman's agreement and it's. Yeah, it really helps like a.
And and the money. Is already going into their budget as a chunk, or does it go in monthly or?
Yeah, so it could say like that. Yeah.
Need an attorney to write it up?
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend. Either the county attorney draft something and it and our attorney, our county. Better vice versa, they do it a lot, I've signed an M O U with them.
Is that something we should be looking at?
Do we have a counselor? No.
Do we personally?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, we have one.
I thought, yeah. Craig Garrett is the county attorney.
We should have counsel.
There's some over the memory.
That's why I need an attorney on.
Melanie or somebody.
Well, that's one thing that that Andy and I have been strong components of, having an attorney on the board. Like I was lucky, I had two, this my last board, which is unbound.
Except, aren't they limited? Aren't they limited, they can't really give advice.
And they don't, they're very, yeah, no, they're not like that, no, they're. Very cut and dry, yeah, they wouldn't, they don't give their personal opinions, they.
You can give you the law, like if they can't serve as your.
That would be a great start, I think. A good start, but I mean, that legally, I mean, there there was. Kind of agreement with the county.
You all feel hungry, should go ahead.
We're gonna try to see our motion, like a motion that we do that.
Do we need one?
I I don't think we need one here. You you think we should? Okay, alright.
I mean, yeah, make a motion that we, yeah, we draft an M O U with the county um general services department.
Is there a second? Is there any more discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of that? Any opposed? Okay, looks some curious. We'll have that listed too. And probably we should listen to what we find out tomorrow. I guess that also brings up the fact, should we have an attorney for the board?
Are you, I mean, it depends, you know, do we, are we able to utilize Craig as often as you'd like or? He's busy.
There is some work.
Melanie Davis.
Shawnee Davis.
She's she's the city attorney.
So it's like, no, we have someone from Kaiser Black, but it costs a lot of money, we don't. Budget, but we can make a budget.
Most of the time they volunteer their efforts.
No, uh not in the last two years, they. Every time Andy goes and talks to him, we go to this.
All of our legal counsel. Melanie Davis is counsel for S T D A. Um Rob Goddard for the I D V.
I'm just saying what our experience has been. We can put funds in it if you want to, but I think this past year. Legal services. It was three hundred dollars and we spent a hundred and ninety. Think the year before that, it was like a thousand and we did spend it, so we can.
And it could be. If you all, does the one part push it back?
We have board attorneys, we have attorneys for each of our board.
But did they have an M O M U A or what?
M M and M O U, no, they service um on the board, um. And they are the advisor for the that board and the laws.
We'll probably Google or get ideas of what you.
I'm just. Well, our friends group have. You know, so if they have a legal question, they do run it by you know, so. It is, it does move you to have one on the board, but it's not a representation.
Yeah, Judge Diggan.
Between us that we can get things.
Derek Anderson's been involved with us, yeah.
My daughter is in three. Alright, we have three. They can pretty well handle just about anything. And you don't want her um.
We're starting by asking the county attorney, so then.
We can use the county attorney, it's just he sets the timeline, helped us when we were doing our sex. And other policy and issues during the interim, but I can't remember that they were.
Ever gotten responses for a long term? Would this be considered critical or did we push quickly on it, or is that something where we're okay with letting it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Response has been excellent so far.
Yeah, I mean.
I hate to say that, but uh it's been atypical, county response.
Last week, I think spoke volumes, I mean, they're here every day, making sure they are handlers and everything. Which is great to see, uh the 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 building is getting the attention it it needed for quite some time, so. Okay, alright, so we'll begin my update with the. We had touch a truck a couple of Saturdays. They had between two hundred and fifty and three hundred people attend. It made the paper, by the way, the Daily Times. They had between two hundred and fifty and three hundred people attend. It made the paper. By the way, the Daily Times. Knocking it out of the box when it comes to publicity with the library from the anniversary. Fly tying to um the the Toucha Truck to the Money Matters. Um, it, we've been on a roll and we made the front page with the, I think it was the Ghostbusters car. Which was great. Um, so we'd like to do it next year. The Toucha Truck and Bruce is not. They had the book sales the same weekend, so. The book sale was doing okay and Friday was kind of slow.
Yeah, good Thursday, slow Friday.
Yeah, and normally Saturdays, it's pretty quiet. Well, with Toucha Truck, they went skyrocket, yeah.
And that was a half price sale and.
Yeah, so I think. Yeah, it was over ten thousand dollars that they made from them. So we're thinking at the next book sale, we have an event as well as a gather and we had a lot of. Young families and kids that were downstairs purchasing. And it's half price on Saturdays too, which is the other great thing to happen. So that was a huge success. We also have. And Chelsea had mentioned this uh last month about that. We have hike uh hiking backpacks that are available. Which is great, so they can, whether usually at the Smoky Mountains or the Blue Ridge. They can actually borrow uh backpacks here at the libraries. It's another great service. Uh, she mentions the storytime and Andy was here today. I mean, hey, it was bananas with. Uh, which is great to see. I love, I it's kind of crazy, kids running around trying to get in the back back door and. Hitting the 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 glass window over there, but they're having a great. And it does a tremendous job singing the guitar and ukulele. Yeah, what a talented.
Good one about there was a couple Michigan.
Michigan, yeah. Yeah, tonight, Michigan, yeah. Steam Kids are going uh extremely hard, going back to youth services obtained, who's in youth services. And she just, um, she was able to secure Anna Keyston tickets, but there's a list in your report. Doll from Dollywood to Titanic to the Zunox, all these tickets for prizes. We have so many that we may hold on to some of them for another.
What are your packet? Anna passed these out to you. Is there the summer reading program? So we'd like everyone here to participate in that. And you're eligible, you're eligible for the gift.
You are eligible, yeah.
Alright.
One other thing to to close out the summer reading program, we're gonna have like a phone party outside. And we're gonna have a dunk tank. So Chelsea did put in there their court members that like to volunteer to be in the dunk tank. You know, please, please let her know, so. Let's go to, let's go to adult services. Um, I just wanna say how awesome. That building anniversary party went on set. Stephanie and Logan were were present, so was Commissioner Bellin. Um, I thought it went first, it began with a meet greet. And what was great was I was meeting people that lived in Rhode Island or lived in Mass or lived in Connecticut. We were just. They specifically came out to speak to me because they. And that was great. It was it and it was interesting because it was like a long line of like, well, it was almost like a. I don't know what you wanna call like a funeral or a wake or something. Ending at one spot that I would boo boo them. But it it went great, so that that was fantastic and Cynthia and Anna. Part of the committee. And then the the birthday celebration was, I thought they knocked it out of the park. It it was them. That did I just basically, they tell me where to show up, you know, one time and I do it. And we had wonderful music from the Grace Flute Ensemble. They were fantastic. We had some cupcakes there. And we had several people that were instrumental in this pictures of work. Of having this building built and that was great for them. And just speaking to them and they's they're so proud of having this. And that spoke volumes, I thought. Some of them I have never met before and it was great. So thank you to the the committee for that. We also had photos and an ongoing slideshow of. Events that have happened the last twenty years, which I thought everyone had a good time watching that, so. Um, so thank you to all that were involved. Again, the newspaper, they hit it out of the park and actually I said that the library. County and that made made the headlines for that, so. But I meant it because it it's terrific here. We also had fly tying. That was the same day as the Toucha Truck, we had fly tying. In book sale and the chess club began. So it was a rocking place and. I wanted to attend, but that was my weekend. I was dropping off one of my dogs up north. But I heard I was, they were sharing pictures with me and it was great. Fly tying was very good and now we have a. Some other fish, a casting program coming. I have to learn how to fish. I do have staff here that are gonna teach me. Casting. I don't even know if that's what you do, but. Throw them, yeah, the fishing. So it's fun. Fly fishing, oh, okay. Um, we had our reference questions again. Um, just and these are great. Uh, photos there at Everett High School. Hilltopper snack bar from the fifties. So that was a question we are. Um, history of linear school. So that's fantastic. Uh, we also have a self-serve program. This was something that the reference staff, as soon as I. I started, they asked about and I had this box room. It just cuts time when it comes to reference staff. Grabbing copies of 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 printouts that are in the reference department. They're going in the back and bringing out. Now it's up to the patron, the game print job. It's a touchscreen. They type in whatever they need, book. Then the the print job shows up. It's gonna cost this amount of money. They put the money in the coin box. Dollar bill and the printout comes right out of the printer. It's just easy. It's just train the patrons. Some get it just like that. There's some patrons that you have to train a couple of times and it and it works very well. I know reference have been very happy about that. That's up and running. We have our first self-loan station, um, which we have a picture of as well. And we've had staff starting to check items out and that's very easy too. Every card, if you have it on the app, you're able to scan it. As soon as you put the items on the pad, it'll check it out, which is great. And the s- the sensor is so sensitive. It's so you don't, you don't even have the items on the pad yet. And they're already checking the materials in or out. So we have staff working on that. We have the gates, new gates that will be installed at the end of this month, including all the self-serve stations. So they'll be up and running. Again, this will help with movement. Um, I'm one, when I go to Progis or I like doing this self. Be in and out. Um, so I would be one that would use that. I think. That'll help staff out at the checkout desk in it for check-in as well. So that'll be up and running. I hope everyone has seen Oscar. If you haven't, please go to the main uh entrance and see. Um, octopus that staff created. That's all. I mean, it looks like something out of Jim Henson. Like a puppet or a fragile rock creature. It's amazing. So and the kids get. So that's that's Josephine and Penny that did that. So we're. We're the talent here is just it. Let's go to the cafe. We have our new merchandise cooler, which is very chic. Awesome. Um, we're constantly putting cupcakes or fruit cups in there, uh yogurt that constantly being. Removed. It's it's great mountains there. Bagels, cream cheese, yeah. It's terrific.
Yeah, during the birthday to give a two dollar off.
That's right, from Patreon point, yes. Um. Let's see here. I do wanna point out the, if you haven't seen the. Money for Kids Travel exhibit. We have it through the end of the month, correct? Through the end of June, the Thinking Money is an interactive, it's fantastic. Sometimes it's it's. When I first went out there, I hear these kids talking. These kids and it's the that goes off by itself in the morning.
It is cool though. I went through the other day when I. Snakes.
And the kids get a pinky bank too.
Yeah.
That's neat. Um, we do have coming soon a pollinator's garden. We have a young lady. Oral College. It is gonna be doing one here, so we have a beautiful sign out there now. Um. One thing that I I do have in my administrative, about the month of May, we had three hundred and ninety-eight new cards. Now this month, I know we're gonna be higher than that because I've seen back of new cards, especially that Saturday when we had the. It was crazy. It was amazing. Uh. So on Thursday is the commissioner meeting, which I'll be in attendance. Hopefully the commissioners vote on the budget. So, um, Andy and I attended the uh workshop. No one had questions. Uh, which is good from the public. Um, it's always a good thing unless they're gonna come on Thursday and. I think it's a, I think it's a terrific budget. I think with Brandy and having Brian up. And Brian and Carrie have been very. We like to see it, so. And we have a good working relationship because they're fairly new like we, I am. So we have a good understand and we wanna move forward with the success of the counties. Oh, and I also attended the Friends and so did Andy. So did Agony, the Friends Appreciation and Annual Board Luncheon. We also had staff members as well come in and thank the Friends for all that they do, which is incredible. I I said they put out their Friends groups to shame. Some.
Almost great meal from.
Oh, lasagna?
Yeah, it was terrific.
Yeah. Um, and yeah, we're meeting with Chris Sorrow tomorrow to go over projects and also the uh the roof and. That'll be updated next month. And Andy, Andy mentioned, we spoke about the Hall of Fame for um. Sports, sports Hall of Fame.
Good. Recording.
Oh, I have one other thing because I don't know if it's on the agenda, so if I'd like to, if I could interject. Starting next month, we are going to continue to review the policies and we're gonna do this constantly. So there was a gap between. The November through April where there was nothing, no policy review. So we're gonna start that next month with actually a selection of and reading of library materials. But we're gonna constantly, every month, that'll be on the agenda of the policy. Yeah, so what we're gonna do and and this is how it was done with me. My previous areas is so the month of July, we're going to give you a policy for. Selection of reading and library material policy. That's when we'll entertain any questions and concerns you may have. At the August meeting is when notifications are done and that's when we go. So we're gonna do that and it then as far as the looking at the policies, right now we have it. So we have like the old. And then we have the new policy. So we're gonna combine that where we have the. What we, what I used to do. Again, having an attorney on on the board, just giving recommendations. It would be like in red or something. Where if something's gonna be removed, still there, but there was like cross. And then in blue or something or green, that's what it's, you know, the lan- the new language is gonna be. So we're gonna do that. With the policies, they have having two of them there, so there's no confusion. Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. While I was going on these last couple of weeks, hope you all came by and those of you that were here, thank you for coming. Okay, Angela, support.
I don't have a phone report to share. We met last Friday. We are still working on. Meeting with Agony and publicity team to work on some of our website. Um, ideas for ways we can give feedback from them to. Particularly to highlight the projects we've funded the last six years. I'm sitting down to meet with Anna just to talk to you kind of about. The history of the foundation board as I'm rolling off as president. With people in the coming year. And we are working to start one-on-one donor meetings. Traditional donors. Over meeting greeted them.
We also have included now the board members from the foundation in our minutes. So that they will have, they will have the minutes of these meetings too, so they'll know know more what's going on in their communication. But if none of those minutes go to all of the funding bodies also, I don't think you all get. Them separately to the commissions, but the the mayors and and the financial, you know, people. Okay, any questions with that, Angela? Alright, Bruce is not here and I forgot the name of the new president. Is the new president of the Friends and uh and they're doing a terrific job. Uh, in in the past. And I think the Friends is just incredible what's been happening there and. Their book sale was just phenomenal. Came with, it was just amazing and so busy. Thing about it, we've actually reached a new high and one we've got a hundred thousand. For the Friends this year and uh. It's just, you all have pretty much earmarked it for for the year, where the funds are going, so it's great. Okay, Liz, do you have?
Yes, so um our June report is uh, we did a report. And just to, you know, highlight to round out our training for the end of the fiscal year, uh this Thursday. Roundtable, um Manny's going to attend. People I've had, we're gonna talk about the standard survey, um the deadline for the annuals. That's where our libraries answer, that's the in-house evaluation tool. Um, it's the twenty eighteen revised Tennessee standards for public libraries. Not requirements, but they are goals to achieve and it covers all manner of different categories. Budget and personnel and facilities and collective element and or even, you know, policy review, things like that. Because I'm stealing that by the way. That's okay, steal that if you're the manager or do that too. Um, so that is coming up. The deadline for that survey is to. Um, the deadline for the annual tech grant um is July seventeenth. Uh, and then of course the ARPA grant, uh invoice, all of that comes to the end of the deadline. So we're also approaching lots of deadlines, um, through the middle of summer, but not set these deadlines for summer. I'm so. For competencies, we had some other, I I had, you had some other staff complete for competency um training and so I will. Next, maybe I'll bring certificates, certificates in their hands for completion to present to them. Um, otherwise, we're just plugging along as most everyone else is. There's no, there's no slow times in public libraries. Um, and the read stats I also included um for the month of next.
Any questions? Do you have a good state?
Our state library, our district. Um, and so he did, yes. Well, uh, June the sixth, I believe is his final day, so. Yeah, we were sorry to see him, him retire, but I read the audacity. Um, but you know, we're. I've heard he'll stay on at T S L A for a little bit for other projects that he had in the works. Um, because he has a great logo of history in our, in our state history, so he'll still be around. Uh, but we'll hope to have an announcement out soon about our new state library. Yes, that's our big names. Um.
Who's the new library?
Great, all great. They have they have summer programs, outreach programs. There as well, so summer's not a slow time.
Okay, thank you, Liz. All right, going ahead to old business. I guess the first part of old business and I I hate. And that's Jesus is. Rolling off the board and it is, this is his last meeting. We really appreciate everything that he's done and especially everything he's done with the search committee. All of his input that over the years. So thank you for for everything you've done with us and we're gonna miss you.
Pauline, thank you. Fantastic and you know, huge good us to the Friends and the Foundation perfect of the of the library. But.
And remember you can come back after a couple of.
Let my kids go house.
Uh just as as an update. With the mayor's staff today to see where we stood on a replacement. Uh they had a replacement um as of three o'clock. She called and declined today, so uh we no longer have the replacement and the mayor's. Um. We gave the the mayor and the. Some other people in it in his office, a list of of. Re- re- recommendations from us. Uh and they are looking at that and then. One of the things as Manny mentioned, we asked to have an attorney.
This person was an attorney.
And this one was an attorney. But they didn't tell me who it was and it or basically she was excited about being on the board. Uh this afternoon and she said, I can't do it, my husband said that. So. Well, that was it. So I said, okay, so we will talk about it and give them some. Come up with a new recommendation and we will vote on a new a new board member next month. And if you have any uh any ideas or recommendations, please let Manny or myself know. Tell me.
So what is our policy? Oh, it's about.
Who's the count?
I recommend Jerry.
Well, you can't, yeah.
Where are we? Where are he was on the who's on the list?
About doing.
He was on the list too.
I don't know that he would, but you think he would?
I don't I don't think he would.
I think he'd like to, I don't know if it's time.
Yeah.
But I don't know what else he's involved in. But it was time for that, but I think.
I could be selective.
But 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 Alcoa is one.
If you're county, you can defend the city of Alcoa.
Doesn't have to be.
If you're.
Certainly has to be a male too.
Doesn't have to be.
Well, the county can learn. Which is considering.
So we're okay either way.
Yeah.
I knew there I knew there was a specific, I was kidding.
Uh attorney Ashley Bentley, uh she's surprising. Ashley Bentley. She's my leadership one class. Sir.
Uh what I'm looking is we have. Our bylaws that we can't handle. That's it. The alert female.
Wasn't it a female like? Then had agree to say yes and then then no.
No, that will still be right.
Yeah, still, yeah.
We have five, so that's.
Yeah.
And one more.
Back then.
Okay, uh amphitheater committee, what about it or did most of us were there?
Yeah, we're gonna meet with um yeah, discussion on what to do with the amp. One idea was working with again the master gardeners. Um so very early in the process, but we'll also have Don or. Someone from his team involved uh to do something with that amplifier. It's been a. It's been a very long time since it's been utilized. And that was a huge safety issue.
Just just speaking just speaking for myself, I kinda want to get like a a reading card. Where it's like you get labeled plants and maybe child friendly seating or something. I just that sounded neat to me. I I always love to. We begin this is, that was just from.
Yeah, that was one of the things we'll talk with uh. Okay, going on to the whole business and or new business, I guess. Yes, the election law officers. So. Election committee. Well, good.
Yes. So uh we had both a state of officers for uh two thousand twenty three uh last meeting and. Now we need to vote on those officers. Uh so what we'll do, we'll vote on each. Nomination and we're looking for other nominations and throw those nominations. Uh and. The nom- nomination for nominee. So for the uh president, uh the chairman of the of the uh board. We have a nomination of Andy Simon. Are there any other nominations for the chair of the the uh board of trustees? I get a motion to close on the one nomination. But if we move to a second, I'll be close the nomination for president uh and select Andy Simon. Any questions? All in all in favor?
Aye.
The uh the nomination for vice president is Stephanie Thompson. Are there any other nominations?
I mean, nomination says.
Sorry.
I moved nomination says.
Uh all that all in favor of Stephanie Thompson for vice president?
Looking towards president.
Oh, her man, yeah.
Yes, she is. So there there is a office of secretary and. Also we feel by stand up. Not necessarily on her position, but. Okay, and she's been been a fantastic guy, so. We appreciate it. Uh so uh those the state of office for two thousand different cities.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for the vote. It's been a fun two years. And uh we've gone through an awful lot in the last couple of years. And uh we're really expecting bigger and better things in life as we're going forward. It's really been exciting. Okay, um. Anybody else have any new business? Get ready to go.
No, I'm just kidding. I have to stay.
Okay, I anything else than we have a function in the drawer.
No, I want to.
Oh, oh, yeah, we have the one one other thing under new business is action plan. I'll be very brief. But this is based on the subcommittees that we had on the. Patron survey. So it's our responsibility now to work on these actions. So thank you all who were part of the subcommittee. So the first question was given increased. Online services, would any online services be valuable, which ones? So now we have databases and we also. So again, these are gonna be actions that we're gonna be doing. We're gonna be. Having explore maybe some new ones that we want to add to the budget, but also have a community forum and you'll see community forum. Several times, so we can kind of lump that together. So we will be having that reaching out to the public, wanting to know what they want. Here in the library. Um realistic options for expanding collections and that would be promotion. And we're gonna be doing that. We have Patreon point. We have a solid P R team. We're gonna continue to do that um. In the next year. So I'm thinking with this action plan is to go. In about six from months from now, this is gonna be on the agenda and we're gonna show. The status on these actions that we're responsible for do. Um what new services can be provided to the community and that'll be part of the community forum. Which services are out there? Cause us as librarians, we have, but we want the public. We want people from Townsend, from Lewis, from Friendsville. Everywhere to let us know what services that we do not have. The fishing, maybe we have fishing pools here, something like that. Um. What new programs and services offered in a longer day? Yeah, but that that's another thing. We didn't have an action from that, but again, that can be done in the, you know, community. We can find out from the community and we can reach out. We could meet at the partnership, the yeah, the partnership. I'm gonna be speaking at Alcoa, actually, I'm speaking at three uh um Kuanis, I'm speaking at three. Onus groups like this summer. So I'll be speaking at one next week on what services that maybe we do not have that we can provide here. Um public relations, what messages can be provided to every presence? Focus groups, again, that can be lumped in with community forum and then revisiting our app. So that's something, now you mentioned Lauren, that partnership is kind of swaying away from the app and going more of the Q R. Style, so that's something to to look at. Um again, what messages can be shared about the role of library as a community gathering? Again, input from social media. Community forum or have these various focus groups. Me, my job, reaching out to the community. Um you know, next week is summer on Broadway. We just walk around, just talking to people. Figure out what they what they want. I'm gonna be volunteering at. Oh Bruce. Hops in the hills next week. That's it, hops in the hill. I'm gonna be volunteering, not as a participant, but I will be volunteering. Oh, so my wife is. Wine bottles to Tennessee, so she's driving and she has wine from Churro Vineyard up in the Cape. And the 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 wine bottles are lighthouses, so really cool looking. And then Newport Vineyards as well, so she'll be driving down some wine that will be donated to um for the N court. So that'll be cool.
Did I hear you say it's the trustees board?
Um let's see, what avenues can be explored? Oh, okay, so two point three, what avenues can be explored or might be underutilized? Again, that's outreach. It's not just me, but it's a have Chelsea Toward who's with. Uh youth services doing more community outreach as well, not just me, having Agony and the whole team on board. Going out there speaking. Uh Cindy as well with Chihuahua, you know, what what are they looking for at the library that we don't have? Brendan as well. All that input really helps, really matters, you know? We don't know every single certain. Out there and that's great. Uh access to professional library staff. Access to professional library staff is important to page purposes, the highest range of quality with. Ways can the library publicly uh appreciate the value of its staff and support team? Another patron survey, which are very valuable, you know, they're a great tool. Uh never used as a weapon, it's a great tool. Um. And then staff appreciation from the board of trustees, which is something that was discussed now. In previous boards that I've been on, the trustees have always done something, maybe like a breakfast or something. On the holidays or whatever, just to say thank you for the awesome job that you're doing at the library. So that could be something that doesn't have to be discussed right now, but maybe the board chair or we. It can be a discussion or a committee on uh. Maybe having a breakfast with staff.
Can we do the med? Do anything uh in terms of uh staff or data type?
So yeah, we do. Um since I've been here, we they did like a potluck for me. And they're doing a potluck for my wife coming in July. And when there's birthdays, uh actually Brennan's birthday was. And there was a cake and we sang and and then someone else's birthday is today. Um and uh we had uh, yeah, we had a little something for her. Uh turning twenty one, so. So.
It's very nice.
Yeah, we do, we. Yeah.
She's so shy.
I know, like we're doing a birthday.
But yeah, we should meet. I like the.
Okay, I heard it's. The first and the second, uh determining.
You say it again, so I can put your names down.
That's right.
Yeah, and they were asking like other candidates for president or vice president. We were last to jump. Anything does it?